The special work session of the Annapolis City Council for Thursday, September 20th, 2018 will be called to order at 3:03. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. City Attorney, please present the next, first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with ID-272-18, Discussion on Special Events, Waiver of Fees and Prendes, including Festivals under Prendes.
Who wants to speak first? I mean, we'll go in order. Let's, let's, let's discuss. I mean, you've just come off the back of that, yesterday's meeting on the Finance Committee, so if you could give us an update on that, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, a few of us on the council, Alderwoman Finnlayson, Alderman Peown and I, went through quite an arduous process many years ago, where the city was getting many, many requests for special events in the city, mostly during the warm months, and many of which were closing parts of downtown at various times. And so, a committee was formed, I believe it was headed by Sharon Kennedy, and a lot of effort was put into coming up with special events legislation. I believe that is when we created the position for the Special Events Coordinator, and it was an attempt to rationalize the use of downtown for special events versus making accommodations for businesses and for residents. Closed streets, particularly on the weekends, affects going to church, and attending breakfast downtown, and those sorts of things. And so, we came up with a list of events that the city thought were events that we should sponsor, and we came up with a process of basically saying no to a lot of events because they weren't on the list. And many of those events were races, bicycle races, triathlons, all of those sorts of things that you enjoy. But we didn't have you in mind when we did it. So, the basic thesis of this is that downtown and downtown space is a scarce resource. Another notion was that we should try to bring people to downtown in the months when they don't normally come, which tend to be the cold months, because that would help business, and it didn't interfere so much with residents. And so, there was a balancing act that went on. When we passed the legislation, to my mind at least, we were not careful, and there's some things in the legislation that I think need to be addressed. Right now, it seems that the legislation reads that the city is a cosponsor of every event downtown, just by virtue of having staff resources. Felicia alone would make every, every event downtown a cosponsored event. Part of the theory of the legislation was, you had to be a city cosponsored event before we would consider waiving fees. And one of the discoveries that we made during the budget hearing this year, because of very good work from our city manager, is we are waiving an incredible amount of fees. So, this isn't just the usage or the occupation of particularly downtown Main Street, but it's also a financial issue. If I remember the numbers correctly, we're waiving something on the order of a half a cent per hundred of tax fee, tax rate, which I think is considerable amount of money. So, the reason for, one of the reasons for putting this on the agenda is, I certainly would call for another look at what, what we're doing with our special events, what we're waiving, what does it mean to be a city-sponsored special event? Are we going to be the sponsor of all special events, and therefore make every event eligible for waiver of fees, those sorts of things? An immediate question is, the nature of the festivals, the ones that you campaigned on, and the one we had recently, and the sense that I've had in discussions with you and with Max, that this is going to be an ongoing kind of thing, I don't know how many times a year. I don't know where they will be held, I don't know what streets or imposition they will put on businesses and residences. And so, in keeping with something that I've said to you many times, I thought it would be good for all of us to have a conversation about this, and a work session seems to be an appropriate time to do that. So, with that as a predicate for this discussion. Zip.
And I would just say, on the Annapolis Rising Free Press Event, that's a special thing, that is something that nobody thought would ever happen. I think the fee waiving was specific to that one thing. I don't think, if we're doing an event that celebrates Cars Beach, or Ahmed Erdikon, and Jack Holtzman, or whatever, and we, it's a for-profit event, I guess, no one would be looking for that. But this was a very unique situation, that none of us thought we would be in.
Great.
Alderman Peown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems like organizations that have parades that are for no purpose other than the pure enjoyment of the citizens of Annapolis and the surrounding area, are events that ought to receive serious consideration for waiver. I mean, I look at the, the Elks Club for the Labor Day Parade, I mean, what, what does the Elks Club get out of it, other than, hey, everybody goes rah rah, hooray for the Elks Club, I can't think of anything. I would also note the St. Patrick's Day Parade, they don't get anything out of this. It's, it's the most fun time, fun parade we have all year, and it's very close to being the largest parade we have every year, yet, you know, we really, why would we be charging them $6,000 for something in the off-season that brings, I mean, it's gotta be five to 10,000 people downtown to shop, to eat, to drink, do whatever they want to do. On the other hand, I think it differentiates from the, a fundraising event, and there are events that clubs use to promote themselves, but, I, I mean, I think we ought to take a very liberal look at what is a city event, and, and what is not. I mean, any group that brings as much pleasure to as many people is, I'm just, these are the only two I'm thinking of off the top of my head, the Elks and the, I guess it's the Warrior, Warrior Events that sponsors the St. Patrick's Day Parade with the Hibernians in cooperation with the Hibernians. I mean, it's a great time, anybody that's ever been to it, it's a lot of fun, and, and they also do probably a better job of policing the parade and running the parade than anybody does, and I hate to admit it, but including us on the Fourth of July, they, they do a really good job. I mean, I don't know how we can quantify that in an ordinance, or how we, I mean, we can specifically exempt different groups as they come up. I don't know if that's the way to do it, or if, you know, they all ought to be included at the beginning of the year. I think annually, we take up a list of events that we're gonna consider to be city events, maybe that's a better way, or there are any number of ways to do it. That doesn't solve the problem of us not collecting the type, the money that we ought to be collecting, but, you know, when it, when it's, you know, a pure fun event, I don't, I mean, I think that's something we need to seriously consider, is, you know, the city sponsoring. Might do sense.
Alderwoman Attorney?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that we have Felicia Nolan here, so I might need her help if I'm wrong about this, but I did do some research, and I talked to my predecessor, who was very, very instrumental in, in this legislation, which took quite an amount of time and effort, and, and in rereading the legislation, the idea of judgment call on what is a special event, as far as what they do and all that, was not really the driver. As you, as you smartly said, Alderman Arnett, it was really, we have these events, and we need to limit them, mostly because of the disruption that they were causing, say that as you will. And so, the genesis of the legislation was to define an event as something that exceeded a certain amount of a crowd, and it also did not want to pick and choose. So, it specifically says, "A special event includes, but is not limited to, parades, marches, rallies, festivals, carnivals, filming, motorcades, promotional events, runs, street dancers, races, walks, or other attendant entertainment or celebration." So, it opens it up to that, eliminates any need for, for, well, I don't know if we like what they do, you know, we, that shouldn't be our job. I think our job is to see, how is this going to disrupt our city's services, our city, the run of the city, the residents? So, it's a very, it's a very slippery slope, I think, if we want to start interjecting whether something deserves to be called a special event or not. And I don't believe that was the intent of the legislation. So, I just offer, offer that for now. Felicia, was I correct?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Those of us that were here, when the legislation passed, know all about it. I, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, frankly, it's why we're here talking about it, because slippery slope or not, I think there's some events that deserve to get a pass, or at least, may, maybe a minimal charge, maybe that's the way to go, $1,000 or something like that, I, I don't know. I'm not suggesting that, but, maybe that, maybe we need to charge a, you know, fairly minimal fee, and, hey, fun or not for everybody, if you want to do it, it's $1,000.
Alderman Finnlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If my memory serves me correctly, we had, at least the committee, had classified our special events into two categories. They were either a major event or a minor event. And we decided, with their recommendation, to approve X number of major events and X number of minor events. And any events that we added to the list after that time, came before the council. And the council had to agree. For example, the MLK Parade was not part of that list, because we hadn't begun those parades yet. And so, when Ms. Monique and her group came before us with their request, it took the council's approval, to, to grant that, as well as the waiving of fees. We have some parameters in that we can decide how much we want to waive, you know? There's no question that the St. Patrick's Day Parade brings a much larger group into the city of Annapolis, and I don't know whether they're a nonprofit organization, or a for-profit organization, or an organization at all, but they seem to have no problem paying the fees. Other groups like the Elks Club, who has no means of, you know, generating funds, they have their little, and I don't want to demean their, their business, because they do a business where they do, but they're not a fundraising, you know, or type of organization. So, if we're gonna look at how to charge, then we should look at their ability to pay, as well as the services that they're gonna require. There's a whole lot more services needed for the St. Patrick's Day Parade than there is for the Elks Labor Day Parade, you know? And the Elks Labor Day Parade is a, you know, it's an institution here in the city of Annapolis. So, there are some things that we can do to make, help us make good decisions about what we can afford to allow in the city, and what we can't. I think I still have a very unpleasant taste, because during the time when the committee was making recommendations, we heard from businesses in downtown, and not a lot, and one that sticks out in my mind, and those of you who've been around, you know exactly who it is, who didn't even want water to be sold during events on City Dock, because it would impede his traffic into his store, I'll just say. So, you know, there is a lot of that wrangling going on when these decisions were made. But I think what's important to us now is to make sure that when events come into the city, whomever it is who's planning them, that they come before this, the council beforehand, and not afterwards. This recent event that we're talking about, there was no opportunity, really, because of the urgency of the tragedy, and then the, the wish to help in, in, you know, kind of ameliorating the, the pain of it all. And that's why we didn't make a decision in July. So, you know, there are different things, and, and we need to look at what's an emergency situation, but if there are things that are gonna be requested of the city, we need to know in advance, and, you know, we need to know in detail what it is we're getting into, as far as financial, as far as staffing, and the like. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
There's another aspect that has come to light about the special events, that I think there's going to be a meeting on the 25th of September about, but a lot of the organizations that want to have special events, I'm more familiar with the ones that go on in Eastport than elsewhere, are being required to have city services, such as policing and so forth, such as Harbor Master, and are being charged for those services, when they have made their own arrangements. I'm thinking of Eastport-a-Rocking, which isn't a special event, but does provide for their own security, and have never asked to have police or police overtime for that event. And so, I think we need to look at the other side of the equation, the other cost side, which is, how much city overtime are we supplying for these events, and is all of that necessary? Because I, I think some events don't need as much, or some events are going on in times when city staff are already on duty, so there's, there's not a need to bill them for that time, or potentially not a need, I don't know, because I haven't evaluated it, we haven't evaluated it. So, I, I guess I would go back to my initial offer, which is, I think it's time for us to revisit it. I don't know yet what the full concept is for festivals, but if it is going to be in downtown, as opposed to on private space, I think we will need to get a fuller understanding of that kind of thing. It's just, it's a matter of planning, and coordinating, those kinds of things. But I, I also think that the, we, I was not aware, and I think I'm, have the reputation of paying attention to the city budget, I was not aware of the amount of money and the amount of fees that we're waiving. We're not even collecting them, or attempting to collect them from organizations, some of which are big for-profit operations, and really ought not to get a waiver of fees, and are, and there are things that are happening sometimes outside of the city boundaries, and yet, we're paying, we're providing staff for those things. So, I think that one thing that I would like to see come out of this discussion is either assignment to a relevant city committee, or the development of a working group like we did the last time, which was a mixture of businesses and residences and people with expertise. Just to take a look at it again, it's been, pardon?
Long war.
Yeah, 10 years, maybe? I mean, how, how long?
Four.
Four, no, no, we've been doing special events for longer than four years. Really? It just seems like forever.
Just feels like it was so long.
It's because those finance committees last for days at a time, so it just makes you feel like decades have gone by.
And Felicia, do we, do applicants put in an economic impact study when they do some of these applicants? Because I know applicants sometimes are sensitive to the fact that they, they bring a lot of economic activity to the city with their applications, and so, the other side of the coin is that, you know? I mean, when, when people were turning down events downtown, we were saying, bring your events to West Street, we'll take anything, right? And I think that's been a big positive for West Street, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was kind of, I was walking up, and I missed the first part of the question.
When they apply, when they put their application in, do they put an economic impact study in, or some kind of economic impact notes with their application to say, we're gonna bring this many people, they're gonna spend this much, and they're gonna fill this many hotels? Has that ever happened, or?
Yeah, Felicia Nolan, Special Events Coordinator. Yes, the, there are a few events that do provide an economic impact, something like Race Across America, always gives me one every year. I can't think of any off the top of my, other, it's off the top of my head, I just know they always do give me one. But a lot of the problem, I don't want to say problem, but a lot of the problem with the downtown events, how you were just saying, how we would be like, come to West Street, well, you know, we'll take it on West Street, is because of the, it wasn't necessarily the fees and the waivers of fees, or what have you, it was the actual amount of events that were limited and restricted by the legislation. And from May to August, there's only four major City Dock events allowed in that time period. Major City Dock event being something down at the City Dock, Randall Street, Dock Street, that area, but that, the same type of event could be on the first block of West Street, and isn't regulated by the special events legislation, if that makes sense.
Okay.
And so, there was four allowed, and then April, September, and October, six are allowed in those three months, three of the six being boat show weekends. So, you know what I mean? So, of major City Dock events, which that's all defined in the legislation itself. Now, smaller caliber events can take place during these months, but a major City Dock event is what Alderman Arnett was saying, how there's, you know, whether it's a certain amount of people at an event, or if they're closing a road, or if they are, I believe another thing is if there's alcohol beverage, alcoholic beverages, like, there's different things that make it a major City Dock event. So, there's differences between major City Dock events and just city events. And a, I'm sorry.
That's okay, good.
And with the city events, everybody's filling out a special events application, whether it is the, we've had a lot of conversation about block parties today, but a block party, or the St. Patrick's Day Parade, they're filling out the same special events application. Now, just because they're on the special events application, and that they are a special event, doesn't mean that they are a city-sponsored special event. Those are the ones that come before council, or, you know, we do our, I do a staff report yearly on that, of what's been passed by council in the past to be, to go forward through the next year.
And so, minus the three boat show events, how many major city events do we have a year?
Can I back, can I back up for just a second?
Sure.
Because we're using the terms kind of loosely.
Okay.
And there are very definite, very definite definitions in the curve, in the code of these events. So, a special event is any activity for which specific and exclusive use of public streets, right-ofways, water, et cetera. That is a special event. A major special event is one that attracts 500 or more participants, and involves one or more of road closures, 30 minutes at any one location, alcoholic beverages, et cetera. A major City Dock event, so you got special event, major special event, major City Dock event, which is held on public streets at the City Dock, that is a major special event, or one that results in road closures, et cetera. So, then you get into city-sponsored, so we're in our fourth definition, a city-sponsored event is a special event for which the city waives some or all of the fees, or otherwise directly participates in the cost of the event. So, when you're talking about special events coming before you, I don't know whether that means you want all special events. If someone simply makes an application, they pay the fees, they have their event, do you want that to come before you? Or are you looking for ones that you waive the fees on? Are you looking for the ones that are considered major? You know, so you need to consider the definitions and what you're looking for, and the code says, for exemption of fees, city council may exempt certain special events from fees by resolution, and in doing so, shall consider the nature of the event, the nonprofit status, location, resources, and mission of the entity sponsoring the event. So, if we, so, some of our events, I'm, I'm not certain the St. Patrick's Day event is sponsored by a nonprofit, I don't think the Military Bowl, I'm not certain whether that's sponsored by a nonprofit, but it says you'll consider the nonprofit by a nonprofit, but it says you'll consider the nonprofit status, the extent of commercial activity, such as sales of foods, goods, or services, advertising, promotion, other private sector participation, and other factors that you may deem considerate. Then there are limitations on the city dock events, as Felicia was saying, in the months of May, June, July, and August, there'll be no more than four. So then it places some limitations on the things that are at the city dock. And it says, after three years, the city council will review the list of repeating major city dock events to ensure they continue to meet the new needs of the community. And it goes through a list of things there, whether they are reflective of the history, heritage, culture, and diversity of the city, organized by a charitable location, charitable organization located in the city that serves the city, open to the public, and doesn't charge a fee, et cetera. And then in the resolution that you all passed back in, before I got here.
It's February or March.
I'm not sure, I'm looking at, no, this is Resolution 718.
It was on probably February or March.
Where you designated the events for fiscal year 19. So you say, we designate the following special events in recognition of their significance to our heritage and public service. And it lists the events, and then we recognize the following and waive fees for the following city-sponsored events that are not organized by the city in recognition of their public service to our city.
Well, may I ask, may I, Mr. Mayor? Was that associated with the budget? I didn't hear the date, I heard you said 2018. Did we do that with the budget?
Yeah, that's the same one, that's the one that includes like the Martin Luther King Festival, the Martin Luther King Parade, Kunta Kinte Festival, Lights Parade, those yearly events.
So that's our way of monitoring every three years, or we do it annually, however long?
We, we have not done the three-year from when the resolution.
You have done a resolution annually, but you haven't done your three-year evaluation that the code says you'll do.
Yeah.
God, there's so much you've said, I don't even remember all what I was talking about.
It's mind-boggling, so that's, I just, you just gotta be, we, make careful with your terms, so we all know we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. When I, when I, before the legislation was passed, when I first started working here, the, without any restrictions, it was like, you know, events all the time or what have you, and there was just like different rules, but nothing was really set in stone. And before this resolution, I'm sorry, before the ordinance was passed in 2014, events would come yearly before council to have permission to happen, like for the large events. Because I remember the first year, it was like all of the races, the foot races had to come before council, different larger events had to come before council. And then once the legis, yeah, I'm sorry, the legislation was passed, the only two yearly resolutions that I do with, it's been, it was Alderman Tierney this year for, since Ward One, the major city dock, no, I'm sorry, the itinerant merchants, what that, if they're selling in the historic district, they come before council as part of the special event, and also these city-sponsored or, and cosponsored events are now, is the only ones that come before council.
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say that I think that this legislation, from a perspective of Ward One, has deemed very successful, and I think Felicia deserves a ton of credit for keeping it very organized, because as, as, as City Manager said, it looks a little complicated, but it really, it does create it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, the objective of the legislation was to create order out of chaos, and I would say that it has done that. And I think the reason we're here today is the waiving of the fees, really. Correct me if I'm wrong, and how we, you know, that was the genesis of this meeting. I don't, I mean, I would ask Felicia, if, oh, you're in here, actually, you can, you can make, you have some involvement in any sort of, I forgot where it says in the code, but if, you know, you can always amend, but do you have any suggestion on where it's currently broken and room for improvement? You have the floor. You don't have to answer that. No, I mean, are there too many applications coming in? Are you, do you know, I mean, you clearly know from our yearly, our yearly resolution what is coming in, or what?
Right. I, I'd have to say that I agree 100% that the legislation has really helped keep it organized, and I'm not getting as many calls of, you know, as I was before it was passed. But I'd, I, maybe we could sit like, and chat about it, because, I mean, there are things, but I couldn't like, off the top of my head, come across, you know what I mean? I'd have to like, think about it. But I'm sure I could think of some things. But for the most part, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
But like you said, I'm also very like, tight-ay in my organization.
I think for clarity, though, could you just very quickly summarize what we do, do every year? Because some of that legislation is sort of rubber stamp, and I think just for the knowledge of my colleagues, what, what we do yearly to?
The events that are?
Yeah, that, that go through, the legislation that we put together for council, the one-stop shopping one.
The resolutions, the resolutions.
Yeah, yeah.
She's, off the top of my head, I can't remember all of them, but I know on the, on the city-sponsored one, it includes New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, Memorial Day. Do you have it?
I do.
Okay, perfect.
I think that's, that's what we want to start with here, the city-sponsored events.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't have it in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Teresa, if you could send everyone, what is it, chapter 14, 16?
Nah, I think it's in 21.
18? Oh, 18, that was in the teens.
14, 18.
Okay, 14 dot 18 dash 020? Yeah, has all the definitions, we really need to reacquaint ourselves with.
The following special events are designated city-sponsored events during FY19 in recognition of their significance to our heritage and public service to our city. Independence Day Parade, Navy Band Concert Series, Kunta Kinte Festival, Tug of War, Grand Illumination, Lights Parade, New Year's Eve Celebration, Martin Luther King Junior Parade, and the Memorial Day Parade. And that there shall be a full waiver of fees for the following special events, Kunta Kinte Festival, Grand Illumination, Lights Parade, and Martin Luther King.
Those are the ones, those are the ones that aren't organized by May.
So that means, for example, the tug of war is a city-sponsored event, but we don't waive the fees for the tug of war?
I think there, I don't think it's full fees, I think it's some fees. Is there more on that? I think it's some fees, because I think, I think the. Yeah, I don't know.
What about the Lights Parade?
Lights Parade is full fees.
So all of these that are, okay, that, that doesn't make any sense to me then.
While we're in the.
Alderman Henderson?
May I pose a question to the City Attorney? I think we've heard kind of several people's opinion of what the statute means when it, or the legislation means when it says a city-sponsored event. The second half of that, that says otherwise directly participates in the cost of the event, we've heard it interpreted as broad as any city resources, which could mean Ms. Nolan reviewing an application. Is it anything as broad as, because that would encompass everything? Is there, or is it so vague that it's void or open to any interpretation? What is your interpretation of what that means by way of city sponsor?
I'd have to take, I'd have to take a look at it outside of today, today's, you know, work session, to fully be able to answer that, to capture the intent of the city council at the time that it drafted the legislation, but I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tierney, I meant the same code, 14, 18, 020, and then I believe city-sponsored is D.
Okay.
And then while, the City Attorney, what is the legal ramifications of being a city-sponsored event? I know the Maryland Tort Claims Act kind of covers things by the state, is there something similar for municipals? Or when we say we're city-sponsored, what does that do in terms of liability?
Well, I, I think that's a pretty broad question. Certainly, the city is governed by the local government torts claims act, if there's, or tort issues that are associated with, with the activity. Outside of that, I'd have to, I'd need to have a more specific set of facts to be able to opine on what types of liability exposure we might be involved in with a city-sponsored event. So if you, I'm happy to entertain whatever question you might have with respect to that.
I think Felicia could speak to it, probably because everybody has to get an insurance rider to actually do an event, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So do, if it's a city-sponsored event and the city is doing it, we would be covered under our, our self-insurance, or how does that work when the city is the actor?
Like, so for, like, New Year's Eve?
Correct.
I mean, or like Fourth of July, yeah, the city's the, yeah, the city's the self-insurance.
If I may, that is correct. I think that once you start getting into a city-sponsored event, we're looking at the potential for liability exposure for acts, for acts or omissions that are deemed to be negligent that arise from the city's actions in having the event. And that's why we have insurance identification provisions in agreements with people who are part of that event.
You used the term city-sponsored when you were defining that, and then it seems like city-sponsored is this very broad term, which could mean anything that has a permit that's reviewed, or something that is only, the city is the only actor in facilitating the event. And I'd just like clarity on, and if this isn't the right forum, then a written opinion is certainly something I'd welcome, but I would like clarity on what is a city-sponsored event, particularly with the second half of that seems very broad to me.
Well, I, I used the word city-sponsored because that's the term that you asked about.
So when you say city-sponsored, you do mean something that is as broad as Ms. Nolan reviewing the application? Then our whole local government tort claims act kicks in? Or what do you mean in that sense?
No, I, I think that what we're talking about is, when the city is the, you know, is the applicant, if you will, for the event, that's, that's when we're talking about a city-sponsored event.
But understanding that the code, when it talks about city-sponsored event, means that, and then more?
It means, I'm sorry.
It means when the city is the applicant for the permit, and then also the language is anything, I'll get back to it, the language, anything that they participate in, or, thank you, Alderman, or otherwise directly participates in the cost of the event. So by the code, city-sponsored is not just where the applicant, but anything we've participated in the cost. And I'd just like to have a better understanding on what that means.
Just for clarification, I know that under the definition section, it says city-sponsored events means special events for which the city waives some or all fees, or otherwise directly participates in the cost of the event?
It's the, or otherwise directly participates in the cost of the event, that I would just like some guidance on what that means.
Okay, thank you, that helps clarify what you're asking, thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
To that end, and I've had this discussion with the City Manager, I do not believe that was the intent at the time, but I do agree with the Alderwoman that it is ambiguous. And I certainly am thinking about asking for legislation to clear it up, and I would certainly welcome input from any of you about that. But I would call on my colleagues from Lason and Peone, I don't think we meant that to be as broad as the ambiguous language seems to indicate that it is. And so I do, I think there will be a call on the Office of Law, at least for me, and I'd welcome others, to get that more restrictive.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sutherland, you indicated city-sponsored events include Memorial Day Parade as well, Felicia, Ms. Nolan, as well as Independence Day Parade?
Yes.
I think we just should put a pin on that, because the three major holidays for the summer include Labor Day, so let's just kind of put a pin in that when we come back to revisit the Elks. Thank you very much.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question, I guess, is for Ms. Sutherland, because I think you may have given this to us in the past, but do you have a list of events where the fees were, I mean, does that differ from the list of events you read earlier this evening about?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely differs, the fees for the Military Bowl were waived, that's nowhere on this list. Fees for the Navy football games, they pay us $10,000 a game, but that's not enough to cover their fees. Those fees have historically been waived. Boat show, we have a lease with, but their fees, so we are getting some lease income from them, but they don't pay their special event fees. There's any, I mean, yeah, I did give you guys a list before, and that list was when I started, so I think it was through April, and I have asked the Office of Finance to give me an updated list now that fiscal year 2018 is over. The other thing is you consider this legis, whether you want to do something with legislation. I think if we are charging fees, these people need to pay those fees upfront, because we're now having collection problems for fees that were not waived by resolution of the City Council, and people haven't paid the fees.
For fees that were not waived?
Were not waived, so we've sent a bill.
I thought they had to be waived, okay.
No, so we've sent a bill and we have not been paid.
Confused.
I mean, like, if, so for all the events that did have the fees waived, those had to be approved by resolution.
Those were, if they were over $300, they were supposed to be approved by resolution. Many of them were not.
Is that $300 in the code?
Yes. The mayor may waive up to $300. Anything over $300 requires the City Council's approval by resolution, and I have stuck to that for every single organization.
Okay.
Which has made some people angry.
Alderwoman Tierney?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then therein lies, I think what brought us here, is that we saw that list, I was an observer of that meeting, a finance committee, so we saw this list where fees were waived, and there wasn't any process, or I don't want to ask why, how, when, where. So how do we prevent that from happening again? And it sounds like you are.
Yeah, that, that, as long as I'm here, that's not going to happen again.
Well, okay, meeting over, okay, bye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, just to reference, there is a chapter still in, or a section of the code, 14 point 180140 speaks to indemnification, 1.540 speaks to insurance requirements. So the city is not liable for some of these costs. I know, I know, but, but the code does require that they provide a certificate of insurance to Ms. Nolan. But going back to the point where it says that if we waive fees, then we're a sponsor, is the issue that I think we really need to address. Because we are waiving fees as a courtesy, you could say, but that doesn't mean we want to be a partner in the event. So that's something I think needs to be clarified, whatever format we take to address this, that should be one of the issues.
So Teresa, the current legislation says that after three years, we're supposed to review those events, so should we get on with that and do that?
Is that?
Not at this forum, but.
If I can, if I can ask a quick question about that? Is that necessarily talking about the ones for waivers? Or is that talking about the events that are like the major city dock events?
It's major city, says after three years, the city council will review the list of repeating major city dock events.
So that's different than that, so.
So that's not all special events.
I could put that together, I mean, we just, I don't know how we would do that, but I can put that all together, of the list of the major ones that we have.
I think, if I could suggest a little direction, I think you guys need to decide what you want to come to you. And whether you wanted to come to you in advance, and whether, well, and whether you wanted to come to you in advance, right? So the Elks Club submitted their application in July after your last meeting, and you didn't meet in August, and their parade was on Labor Day, right? So we told them, you know, go ahead and have your parade, get an Alderman to put in a resolution for you to waive the fees, but know that if that resolution doesn't pass, we are going to bill you for the fees. Same thing with Annapolis Rising, if you don't pass the resolution. Same thing with Annapolis Rising. If you don't pass the resolution, we are going to collect the fees. Okay? But I'm hearing you don't like getting it after the fact, after it's happened.
No, 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 you misunderstand. I understand when certain things occur, but I want us to try to plan. With Annapolis Rising, there was no getting around, there was just no time.
Right.
You know, the Elks, they should have known, they didn't.
Right.
You know?
Because their fees have been waived in the past, you know, so they, right.
Exactly.
So some of this is a, is a transition learning experience for some of our recurring applicants.
Yes.
But, but my question to you, when I'm saying, kind of decide what you want, do you want to waive fees if it is a for-profit entity sponsoring the event? Do you want to waive fees if it is a nonprofit entity sponsoring the event, but they are charging some kind of an admission fee? If it's a parade, they're charging people to participate in the parade, right, so you can take the cost of the fees, include, you know, recoup those costs through your parade participation fees, whatever it is? Those are the kinds of policy things you need to decide, and we can craft legislation to reflect what you want, but it's not clear what you want.
I think we do need a committee, as much as I hate creating another committee, we do need a committee of the council to look at this, with, under Ms. Nolan's leadership, because she is the person who has the expertise. And as I was reminded, she is the person who has been able to carry over, let's say, the policy from one administration to another. So, under her leadership, I think we should, and I don't know what committee, do you want the Finance Committee to deal with it, Economic Matters to deal with it, Rules to deal with it, one of each to deal with, who knows? Audit Committee to deal with it?
Alderman?
One person from every committee, I mean.
The city attorney just researched it, and it actually goes to Environment and Transportation, but I didn't sense an overwhelming desire for, on the part of the Chair of Environmental Matters, to take it up.
So that means Planning and Zoning will get it, right?
Maybe, Teresa, you could come up with some structure and some ideas on that with Felicia, but I think if we do form a committee, or if, we need to bring in some stakeholders, because I know a lot of people that do take risks on these events and bring them to the city, and do bring economic benefits to the city, do feel a little bit unloved on some of this stuff, you know? In most of these parades, you can bear, you know, you give a lot of volunteer time, and you don't get anything but the satisfaction of seeing a great parade happen, you know? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with ID-273-18, Cultural Landscape Resources Report.
Pete Sally Roberta, please come forward. How you doing? Good? You guys bike here? Did you bring your bistro tables with you?
As I, as I sit in there, Ron.
Nice.
I just want to know, is it a, is it a, is major special event equivalent to a major site design, something that's not minor?
That was planned development.
Good afternoon, Pete, I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning. To my left is Dr. Sally Nash, Chief of Comprehensive Planning, who will be doing the omen's job on this presentation, but to my right is Ms. Roberta Lehner, our Chief of Historic Preservation, on the much awaited, due cultural landscape survey that's been out there for a couple of years. I will just do some brief remarks and turn it over to Dr. Sally Nash. What I wanted to express to you, that this is a resource document, it's not something that needs adoption or endorsement from anyone or any given organization. This was chartered through the City Dock Master Plan, and what we've done is gone through and hired a consultant to do the analysis and complete the report. It doesn't say do this, or don't do that. It is a resource document, as I said earlier, to be utilized, much akin to the design guidelines, but very specific to the City Dock area. So it is something that would be utilized to measure up against a proposal in that area of the, of the city, and that is the extent of this type of document. It really is, I would express the understanding that this is a resource piece of information, so.
Let him go through the presentation first, please.
Question on that, what's the design guideline?
The Historic Preservation Design Guidelines, questions, yes. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Nash.
I know.
Can you guys see that? Because we can hardly see that, what he...
Yeah. That's right. I also emailed it yesterday. All right, I did email the presentation. What did you say, Ross?
I want to move back to this. Although there is something to tell. Drunken, yeah.
Fair point.
The good old days.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking MHT and the, some of our local architects and historians who helped us a lot with this report, and our consultants prepared and gathered the information that they did. So first, if you remember back in 2013, it was about 1:00 in the morning, the City Dock Council adopted the City Dock Master Plan, with a few caveats. One of those was that a cultural landscape report should be prepared, and then presented to HBC and City Council. The table of contents for the cultural landscape report largely follows the recommended guidelines from the National Park Service, who is the agency that oversees historic districts. And I'm just going to briefly go through some of the most important parts about the document. The study area is by and large the same as what was shown in the City Dock Master Plan, although the consultants felt that it would be important to also analyze additional areas around Prince George's, Prince George Street, because there's a lot of historical integrity to that part of City Dock. But they also divided the study area into four areas to really be able to focus in depth on the different areas. And those are the pink Cove Basin, the purple Market and Environs, the yellow Prince George and Dock Street, and the orange Compromised Street. So first, just to go over our basics, what is a cultural landscape? It's a geographical area associated with a historic event, activity, or person that exhibits cultural or aesthetic values. It can be thousands of acres, it can be less than an acre. And like historic buildings and districts, these places reveal aspects of our origins and development through their form and features, and the ways they were used. So the important thing about cultural landscapes is, the key to them is the relationship between the built environment and the natural A cultural landscape report, therefore, is something that assesses a landscape as a continuum through history. It assesses cultural, assess, they assess cultural and historic values, significance, and integrity, and they provide necessary philosophical framework for a consistent and holistic approach for a cultural landscape project. So this is the important goal of a cultural landscapes report, is that it really provides you with a philosophical approach for how you want to protect and preserve your resources. There are a lot of different components of a cultural landscape report. You can see on this list, it's things like natural systems and features, land use, buildings, and even small-scale features. For City Dock, the cultural landscape reveals new and layered narratives, not only of Annapolis, but also of our country, and economic changes and social changes that were happening in our country over time. Some of these narratives are well-known and have been shared widely and glorified, while others have been suppressed, written over, and even scraped off the land in many places. City Dock's landscape is the creation of the interdependence of water and land, but also the story of the people who populated and worked at City Dock. The story of maritime and industrial work is largely missing on the landscape we experience today. All right, so philosophical framework. Basically, that comes down to a treatment option. And treatment is a term used in historic preservation. There's four different types of treat, treatment: preservation, restoration, reconstruction, and rehabilitation. And these speak to the degree to which material is preserved and protected. Some of them, like restoration, means you pick a particular time period, and you, you protect the features from that time period, and you remove features from different time periods. So you prioritize one time period over another in terms of the work you're doing. Reconstruction is when you don't actually have any material left from what you're building, and you reconstruct it based on different historical information. Like, at the Peca Gardens, they reconstruct, or they constructed the Summer, the Summer Tower, Summer House, from a painting. So there wasn't any historical material left from the original Summer House, but they were able to build it based on some of the documentations that they had. So rehabilitation is one of the most flexible treatment options. It's used to deal with continuing and changing uses that still retain the property's historic character. It's defined as the act or process of making possible compatible use for a property through repair, alterations, additions, while preserving those portions or features which convey historical, cultural, or architectural values. So it allows more flexibility in terms of adapting a historic structure to a new use. So you can think of like Nine St. Mary's, where they've largely kept the original structure intact, but they have had to add certain features and change certain things just so it could work better in a 21st century context. So rehabilitation is the treatment option that this report recommends for City Dock. It's, like I said, a flexible option, applies in a lot of different situations, allows for adaptive use, it doesn't require restoration to a particular time period. And in our case, our period of significance is 1695 to 1942, so it wouldn't require restoration to 1695 or even 1942. And it's generally appropriate, the appropriate treatment when, that, when there'll be additions and things like that. So I think, I'm glad that this report recommends rehabilitation, and I think one important thing to consider is that we need to be flexible as we go forward, because we have, you know, this is the FEMA map, it shows the 100-foot, the 100-year flood plain, and we know we're, we're going to have to be flexible in order to deal with what's headed our way.
Yeah, just going to wait till she finishes, yeah.
The report goes into a lot of detail with maps from before 1860 that trace the changes in the City Dock shoreline. And it, it's pretty interesting, you can see 1695 was the Nicholson Plan, and this is really the foundation element of City Dock, because that laid out the streets, and a lot of it is, this Baroque plan is still intact. And as the years went by, City Dock, as you know, was filled in over time. So in the 1700s, the shoreline followed the buildings that are, that front Dock Street now, Market Space, and part of Compromised Street. But as time went by, in 1844, for example, parts of Market Space have been filled in, and sides of the harbor have been straightened. Then you have the late 1800s, and this famous, this is actually a zoom-in of Sachs Birdseye, which actually shows a much bigger picture of Annapolis. But both sides of Market Slip have been filled into their present shoreline, from Craig Street to the head of the waterway. And then you have early 1900s, the original cove is paved and formalized as surface parking. The plan also goes through post-1860 maps, it goes through a series of Sanborn maps, And then it discusses historic condition, existing condition, integrity, and treatment approaches for the four different sub-areas. So historic condition is, you know, a brief description of the characteristics and features during the period of significance. Existing condition, what is still existing today. Integrity discusses comparative historic and existing conditions to determine how certain characteristics or features contribute to the historic integrity of City Dock, and the treatment approaches, which provide specific guidance for each of the four areas, and then City Dock as a whole. The Sanborn Fire Insurance Maps are compared, one from one to another. There's 10 different maps that are analyzed from 1878, 1885, 1891, 1897, 1903, 1908, 1913, 1921, 1930, and 1959. So they very carefully go through each of the sub-areas for each map, and look at what's changed from one map to another. And this gives us a sense of both how the shoreline has changed, but also how social and economic forces changed over time. Which businesses went out of business, which buildings were enlarged, which buildings went away, where the market house was, was at any given point in time, and also where people lived, and where there's still remnants of where people lived. Generally, the, the people who, the wealthier white residents, you know, their houses in like, large part are still around, whereas the poor, you know, a lot of their properties near the Naval Academy were destroyed and replaced with, with more buildings. And they, they trace that evolution of the social and economic landscape over time. So they make treatment approach recommendations at the end of each study area. They also make general treatment approach recommendations, and I've put some of the ones I felt were most important here on the slide. They include, maintain City Dock as the city's most significant open space, maintain historic visual, physical relationship of land to water articulated by the Nicholson Plan, consider how the built environment and natural systems intersect at City Dock, and how the city can adapt the landscape to accommodate sea level rise, initiate a community dialogue based on how the cultural landscape might incorporate both commemoration and interpretation, particularly regarding the history of race on the site, African slave trade, maritime history, exclusion and inclusion, and religious conflict and toleration, increase and foster economic development in the greater downtown in truly inclusive manner, and provide substantial opportunities for continued interpretation and equitable memorialization in a thriving waterfront mixed-use area. All right, thank you.
Alderman Turney, your hand up first, yeah?
Just as, yeah.
Anybody else presenting, or not?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't, bear with me, Alderwoman, hence it, I'm going to bring up the, I asked for this work session because I knew this report was underway, and I knew how important it would be in the evaluation of future development at City Dock. And I implore my colleagues, I know you all have other things to do in your wards, and a lot of other things to read, but just humble me and skim through what... a lot of other things to read, but just humble me and skim through it. But if you want to get a gist of City Dock in one paragraph, if you would, I could read it now. It's just a beautiful paragraph that just puts City Dock in perspective and worth, I'd like you to read the entire report. City Dock's, page nine, "City Dock's essential defining characteristic that contributes to its role in the survey is its water-land relationship. Its cultural landscape depends upon the intergo-visible interrelationship of water and land at the city's water edge. The intentional plan for urban streets that descend from the city's institutional landmarks at higher elevations and terminate at the water's edge provides the primary organizing element that allowed the humble City Dock to evolve into the third and more organic focal point, the historical mixing place of contact and commerce, the non-institutional heart and soul of the city. The original natural and early modifications of the Cove's safe harbor into the more formal dock are significant to the overall spatial organization of Annapolis as defined by the Nicholson Plan in the late 17th century. City Dock's oldest surviving building still defines, in most cases, the extent of the historic built area and should constitute the built form juxtaposition with the water's edge. To preserve that vital relationship, the area between those buildings and the water needs to be open and unobstructed, both physically and visually." So that begs my question, how, you said at the beginning of your testimony, of your presentation, this is just a resource document. But you did mention that it would be used in tandem with the Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. I'm going to ask the most inevitable question. How do we prevent this from being not utilized in any future development at City Dock? Or I could ask it a better way, how is it going to be utilized in any future development at City Dock? Thank you for listening. I yield.
Sure. So I think one of the most important things, that's a great paragraph and I understand where you're coming from, how is this going to be utilized? One of the things this document goes through is talking about the evolution of the whole area. And it talks about the historic conditions and the current existing conditions. And it goes, and it talks about the treatments that should be applied when you're comparing the two of them. So as you go through a proposed project, this would, in my opinion, be utilized to assess whether or not it's meeting those, that evolution process, whether or not those treatments that they suggested are being utilized as part of maintaining that Nicholson Plan. I mean, there's a lot of changes that have occurred within a Nicholson Plan, so that doesn't mean there can't be change, but you've got to, the document talks about maintaining those views, maintaining those spaces, maintaining those building lines, if you will. So it would be something that somebody would ask somebody as part of our review to say, how do you, how is your proposal consistent with what they're talking about in this resource document?
So hence, the date of historical significance ranges from 1695 to 1942. To your point, it acknowledges the transformation of Annapolis, if you will. Why is 1942 the end of that duration? What was significant with it ending there and that we didn't continue?
Thank you, Roberta Lehner, Chief of Historic Preservation. I was very much part of Sally's PowerPoint and editing this document. The 1942 date was established a few years ago using the Rex Center, the old Rex Center on Compromised Street, as one of the last, actually, contributing buildings to the historic district. So that was, that became the icon for the cutoff date.
One last question is, the Nicholson Plan is really the common ground here. Is that what I'm hearing in your review? And so where is that in the hierarchy of importance when you review any element of something going on in the historic district? I'm coming, I'm going outside a little bit of City Dock, per se, but the Nicholson Plan radiates from the two circles. So I guess that's for you, Roberta, where, or Pete.
Well, we consider it essential to protect the historic vistas and views that are, that maintain the Nicholson Plan. The Nicholson Plan was, is very much intact and even though somewhat changed, it's definitely visible anywhere. One thing I wanted to say, excuse me for shuffling to notes, the landscape, thanks to the Nicholson Plan, is iconic and it's, as I said in the report, a distinct and recognizable place for more than three centuries. And so we want to be able to, for it to continue to be distinct and recognizable. If you think, if you ask people in other parts of this country and even overseas, you know, what is Annapolis? They usually can picture those radiating streets of the Baroque plan. But an important part of the report, the Nicholson Plan shows the streets radiating down into a cove. And so the essential defining characteristic of City Dock, according to the report, is that cove basin and how that should be recognized as the district's most distinct open space. Does that help you?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Annett?
Mr. Mayor, so I think Ellie started, Alderwoman Tierney started us down discussion that I think we're going to have a lot of, I know some of us in this room are going to have it Monday at 10:30, is it? Whenever our meeting is. But the council has been presented with some legislation, oh, 1918, that asks to get rid of the 45-foot height limit. And I sense that this landscape has to do with viewscapes and has to do with scale, height. I would hearken to the District of Columbia and particularly in all of our news media when we have a picture of the White House and in the background you can see all of these construction cranes and huge tall buildings which are specifically prohibited in DC. Unfortunately, they now all reside in Roslyn and look down upon DC. But I think one of the questions that we're going to be asked, and it does have to do with increase and foster economic development in a greater downtown that's in a truly inclusive manner. But going back to the question that Alderwoman Tierney asked and we're going to be continually confronted with, how does, Mr. Gutwold, you said this is not a definitive document, it's not a restrictive document. So I guess the question is going to be, how do we use this as a support document? How much will it factor into thinking about MX zones?
Right, but Ross, just a note, that that legislation is not getting rid of a 45-foot requirement. It is saying that just because you're 45 feet doesn't mean you have to be a planned development just because of that criteria alone. So that's, plus, the height districts for City Dock-
I understand exactly what it's saying and I oppose that, so just so we know where we are.
The height districts for City Dock have nothing to do with that because they're governed under a map.
There's specific height districts.
You should be scared.
They have specific height district requirements that are mapped.
But is there in the Nicholson Plan-
So back to your original question.
...height for the city of Annapolis downtown or writ large?
Your original question is how is this going to be used? And I think how this document is going to be used was where we were going a minute ago, I thought, and what Alderman Tierney was talking about. And I said akin to the design guidelines, while the design guidelines are adopted and that kind of motion. But I, you know, there are certain things and resources, we have a number of different type of design guidelines that are referenced in code. I guess we could go that path, that we could reference this to say, you know, we need to look at that. I think it's done through the City Dock Master Plan. It calls for this. It called for this to be done. And it called for this to be utilized in relationship to any new proposed document, any new proposed projects. So you could go down the path of additional legislation. I'm saying, you know, the department would look upon this as another resource document to say, here's how you're, here's how you're consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that is a condition of every site review, a project that's proposed. This is another resource that somebody's going to have to look at in order to say, the Eastport Design Guidelines, you have those as well. So this is a document that somebody would have to utilize and go through as they, with any proposal they have in downtown in their specific four different areas, and talk about how they meet and are consistent with what this document says and how you're meeting the treatments. There are a number of treatments that it talks about. And it goes through an evolution process. And how are you sticking close to that evolutionary process and maintaining that Nicholson Plan? Because there has been changes in this area, but what the document says is, in large part, that Nicholson Plan has stayed intact over the 300-plus years. So even though there has been changes to the area. So I put it in the context that don't, that there can't be change in the downtown, in the City Dock area, but there are certain, it has to be in context and character of what it historically has been. So, I mean, and that's riddled throughout our zoning code about context and character of the neighborhood or the surrounding environs as it is in the design guidelines. This is one more resource document to, instead of somebody guessing how it's in context and character, to give them more descriptive. They go through an excruciating, sorry, not to anybody's discredit, but excruciating detail, all those Sanborn maps, about what it was, what happened, and how it changed from 18 whatever it was to 1959. So there's a lot of information in one document that somebody can go through as they try to make a proposal and document how it has maintained and been consistent with any changes that have occurred over the 300-plus years. And that's what this document's all about.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I thought you called on me.
So I still am, and I am wondering whether or not we should consider legislation. I still don't fully comprehend what the impact of this is going to be. I can remember back when we were talking about the City Dock Master Plan and we were talking about doing various things and we were, in fact, the faucets building, and we were talking about what that did to the historic viewships.
Yeah, this would have been a great resource to guide that site plan.
Right, so.
We didn't have it. So, you know, but that, to dictate how and where that, you know, to establish that building line, all of that stuff would have been great to have, that would have been, I mean, this is one thing we talked about, if we would have had this information at that time.
Will this be translated into standards?
No, I, well, I mean, my knee-jerk reaction is no. My knee-jerk reaction is to use it as a resource to the standards that are there today. I mean, you get, the code is specific in context and character, the neighborhood. You don't get more specific than this and it's very difficult to legislate what's in this document because it's different, as they got into it, as the consultant got into it, they differentiate between, you know, four different areas, Compromised Street to the Market Space to Dock Street. They differentiate all four different areas, just within the City Dock area, about what is the context and character of each and every one of those blocks.
Right. No, but so, but I think this is really an important issue and I plan to be talking with you about it a lot and I hope my colleagues will become sensitive to this and join me. But I happen to be looking at the 1957 area map on the second floor over in the Gorman Building. And I was noting how remarkable the change is. All of Forest Drive was cultivated land. And then there's the 85 map and so on and so forth. And one of the things I was asking Sean Wampler is, can we put together a photo montage of looking at Annapolis as it has morphed over time? And it has changed. I guess my question is, has it changed consciously? Has it changed because we have had a specific policy direction for change? Or is it happening very incrementally and sort of unconsciously? And is, and I think that is how things happen by and large in the built environment, but is that how we want them to happen? And particularly, do we have a set of standards for Annapolis? What makes Annapolis Annapolis? And my view is, Annapolis is analogous to Washington, only lower scale still, that it is a low-scale city, largely populated by two-story residential buildings, but even in the commercial areas, the scale is low, two or three stories. And I think that that's part of the cultural landscape. And I worry about how we get changes in that, like Park Place or the bank, the Severn Bank on the Circle, those sorts of things, which I don't think are the prototypical areas. And then, does that mean that none of Annapolis can get tall? You know, 1901 West Street, the parole town center just outside of the city? And I guess I'm grasping for a open, inclusive process where we decide how we're going to morph into something different. Outer West Street, where I don't think anybody finds automobile dealerships attractive, but would we find another parole town center there, tall buildings, a Roslyn-type construction as the gateway into the city? And so I think that this has a lot of impact on how we make land use decisions as we go along. And I think it's illustrative of the fact that we have been making land use decisions all along, not necessarily with a set of these kinds of guidelines, standards, whatever you would call it.
So the answer to your question, consciously? I would hope it was consciously and it was done through your comprehensive plans since probably the 50s or you could go all the way back to 1690, what was it again? The Nicholson Plan. I mean, you consciously have, over the years, created comprehensive plans for the city and delineated how and where and why you wanted to grow or didn't want to grow and where you wanted to preserve and where you didn't want to preserve, or where you said this is a good opportunity for some, for change. And you implemented that through a number of different things. Your developing, your zoning code, your capital improvement program, and your subdivision regulations and other element plans, your master water sewer plan. You have done that through implementing, through those processes. So I would hope it's been done consciously. It's not done parcel-specific because that's where you go through your zoning review process and you've allowed for flexibilities of types of uses, so.
But in that plan, we had four designated potential growth areas.
Well, the most recent one.
Right. And I haven't gone back to examine what's going on there, but I have a sense that not as much is in areas that were not designated as growth areas. And I, of course, thinking about my own ward. But I, making a comprehensive plan and adhering to a comprehensive plan, I would submit are two different things. And so this is something that's weighing heavily on my mind. I'm not, I'm looking outside of Ward Eight Two. I'm looking at Tyler Avenue. And I'm seeing a lot of small homes on large lots that are easy to buy and easy to convert into McMansions like the Sears House at the end of State Street in Chester. That's a dramatic change in community character. And I'm looking for guidance, and frankly, guidelines, about how we don't change Annapolis from small-scale, low-impact residential- from small-scale, low-impact residential buildings to as big as you can get it kind of buildings, à la Northern Virginia or Chevy Chase. So, that's why this, this, I'm going to read it. Unfortunately for you, I will read it and take it to heart.
I read it. It's a, it's a great document, and it really tells the tale of time. I mean, it is one heck of a resource for information now that's been all over the place, now consolidated into one document.
Yep. All right. Well, I thank you for this. I haven't delved into it fully. I did flip through and look at all the maps, but I look forward to reading it.
If you go real fast, it does the characters. No, I'm just kidding.
Right. Right.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to, I think your initial question, Alderman Arnett, was really spot-on. How do we translate this into policy or code? And, you know, I do, I tend to go in the direction, I think, where we'll need some kind of code, policy adoption. I mean, I hear what you're saying in terms of using this as a resource document, similar to the City Dock Master Plan. But, I mean, I recall a conversation we had a few, a number of months ago, maybe half a year ago now, when, about the City Dock Master Plan. And I remember, I recall you saying that, you know, to get, to use that as a resource document, we had to kind of adopt the policies, because I think I was asking about the waterfront with downtown, or something along the City Dock.
Sure.
And so, you know, that gives me pause in terms of actually the strength, about how much strength this would have as a resource document. I'd feel much better if it was codified in some manner or translated. So, if you do have any recommendations in this document...
Well, one of my recommendations would be, if you were going to do legislation, would be similar to like the Forest Conservation Manual, and you're, something you're familiar with. Adopt it as a reference that has to be utilized in evaluating any, you know, as a reference, you know? We do it with traffic guidelines. How do, how do you do it, you know? It says you have to do it in accordance with the traffic guidelines, is what the code says. So, that's probably the easiest way, and something you might, you know, you're familiar with, but, you know, that's just one idea.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you. I think the last question I have is, is simple about the timeline. I've not had a chance to look at this, but is this, where is it in the process? In their approval, review? Who's going to get to review it? What's the timeline?
We, it's, it's, I mean, we weren't opening it up for, you know, this is what the consultant came up with, but, you know, this is, this is what they did, and this is, you know, they did, this is their report, da-da. So, we were presenting it. We've gave it to the Historic Preservation Commission themselves. We will go back to them, but what was ordered was to do a presentation in front of the City Council for informational purposes, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. I mean, to understand the consultants, and they didn't let us, you know, they were like, this is it, kind of thing. Here's your, here's your cultural resource report, or landscape report, so...
Are you drafting any kind of addendum to it?
Not, I mean, no.
In terms of policy recommendations or...
The only thing I would, from this, from, you know, after you guys review it, if there's legislation to, I mean, if you want to do what we just said, that's, that would be the next step, to me.
Okay.
Because I think this really outlines, you know, the treatments, you know, it outlines, you know, the evolution. It outlines, you know, here's, here's what you, this is how you do your analysis for any proposal downtown. This is what you should be measuring yourself up to.
Well, I do look forward to just reading it. And so, this is going to the HPC, just kind of as a presentation, here's what was put together?
Yep. If you want additional information, I guess we can come back and, that's what we're doing with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Does it have to be adopted by the council?
No. I mean, it doesn't have to be, but if you want, I mean, the document isn't, wasn't required to be adopted as legislation, but, I mean, you could do subsequent...
It was required in the, in the City Dock Plan. Was it required in the...
To be done, yeah. The City Dock Master Plan called for it to be done before any zoning changes occurred down in the City Dock area.
Okay.
All women to any?
I'm sorry, I'm, what I'm trying to equate is, forgive me for, what I'm used to doing in, in construction, is, you know, when you're building a building, there's a, there's a spec, there's a list of specifications.
Yeah.
Standard specifications, and to make the silly analogy, bear with me, it's not silly, but that would be sort of like our building code. And then we would have, when building a building, there'd be a wonderful report, that I loved anyway, similar to this, which is sort of what was the geotechnical report, which talked about a building site, its archaeological criteria, soil, all the stuff, like what was there. And you, it's something that you really can't codify, you lose everything in translation. You just know that you have that soils report as a resource. And so, that gets me to the, this master spec list, if you will, if we, when we're building a building, we have a specification list, and then we have a resource list. And then something happens, not that it ever did, but we always planned for it ever to happen, was what document governed if it went to court? And you got to think of that. And so, I don't think we can, I mean, I think our, our recent example with the City Dock Master Plan, subjective opinion here, I don't think we're ever going to codify that thing. I think it's been so cherry-picked and so politically destroyed, that I don't think we'll ever codify the City Dock Master Plan. I think it is a vision, and it, and we have it, we have it as a, what do we call it? It was adopted by the City Council. So, what, I think the answer is, and here is, the comprehensive plan, is where we list these documents, I assume, and give it some kind of priority? I mean, and that's, I mean, that's the question. What is the governing document when something conflicts something? I mean, you got to think that way. Is that a fair question?
Sure. And that's just, going with Mr. Alderman Savage and AlderNet's comments, is that what's going to dictate, what's going, you know, in court, is going to be code.
Okay, there you go.
So, the code calls for a reference to this document, and we're utilizing this document to make a decision, and somebody challenges us on us, that's, that the code would say we're supposed to use this document.
In what capacity, though? As a, using this document as what?
As a resource to determine whether it met the criteria of context and character of the neighborhood, you know, any number of those types of things.
It's tricky.
Because there's a lot of subjective things in the code.
Yeah.
Well, welcome to my world in zoning.
No, I know. I mean, because I...
Not, one size does not fit all. That's why codes are written the way they are.
I know, I know, I know.
Zoning codes particularly, but seemingly building codes. That's why you have that resource, because not one size fits all, not every code specification fits a specific building, or a particular building.
Exactly. You have, every project is sort of reviewed on its own merit, and, exactly, on the City Dock Master Plan, I look at, and then I look out there and say, where's my promenade? Because it's in the City Dock Master Plan, and it's not filled, because the City Dock Master Plan, that part of the City Dock Master Plan wasn't codified. So, I think at a minimum, we should adopt this as a document.
Okay.
I suggest, maybe.
I think in the code, you should reference it, is what you're getting at. You should reference this document, and it must be utilized in concert with any, you know, in 2156. Or, you know, something to that.
Can you help me with that?
Sure. There's only 12 pieces of legislation I'm going through right now.
No, I mean...
Just one more.
Thank you.
Sure.
All women, Henson? You both went up at the same time, so I'm just giving...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm listening to your presentation, and I heard Dr. Nash indicate regarding the treatment options, that rehabilitation was basically the most fluid. Which brings me to a very important question. And in some circles, you know, historic preservation is looked at as being somewhat rigid. I would be interested in hearing at some point, how the rehabilitation fluidity is reconciled with oftentimes what historic preservation may see.
Sure.
So, I, I think actually rehabilitation is the most flexible. It is, it recognizes that change is necessary and desirable, in this case, for a landscape to remain dynamic. It's appropriate when repairs are necessary, but alterations are needed as well. The, the other, you can't do, the first one really just preserve, because none of us want City Dock to just stay as is. We already have a significant area in this, in the City Dock, so we can't reconstruct from the beginning. We don't, we can't also, we can't restore it, because then we would have to pick a period in time, and those are, there are many important periods in time. So, this rehabilitation actually gives you the most flexibility of the four. And, by the way, for your reading pleasure, as long as you're reading so much, the consultants and, and the staff here in analyzing the report, used the really extensive guidance called, the Guidelines for the Treatment of Cultural Landscapes by the National Park Service. And that has been recently updated on the web. But, there is a very concise document, and that's one of the National Park Service Preservation Briefs. And Brief Number 36 is called Protecting Cultural Landscapes: Planning, Treatment, and Management of Historic Landscapes. So, if you just Google "National Park Service Preservation Brief 36," you'll come up with that very concise document that helps us all understand cultural landscapes and...
That's a problem.
Right. I just wanted to emphasize that, because it's, it's easier reading than the entire National Park Service guidelines.
It's also one of the most flexible of the four treatment options. That doesn't really mean it's flexible, if you know what I mean.
This, I just wanted to reiterate, there is a preservation point to this, so, yeah.
Which follows up another question, and Ms. Lainer indicated those two documents that we should read. If we take this document that you have prepared and incorporated it into a resolution, those two automatically become part of what we're looking at if there should ever be an issue that comes to, to light. Is that correct?
No, I think what Ms. Lainer was referring to, those were the documents that we used to create this document.
Okay.
National Park Service gave you guidance. This is how you do, this, this is the five steps to do a cultural landscape survey. I'm kidding. But, you know, it's just, it's the steps and how you do one.
But it's not referenced in here?
It is referenced in the document.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
So...
If it's referenced in here, that automatically becomes a part of the resolution if we choose to proceed with one.
I guess the method would have, would, yes. I just meant the documents wouldn't be...
No, no.
Yeah.
Just making it clear. Okay. Thank you.
First of all, thank you. I'm trying to think back, it must have been two administrations ago, that the City Dock Master Plan was approved, and, and we did adopt it as an amendment to the comp plan. And in the...
Look how far we've come.
I got that. That was clever. I like that. Did you get the other meeting that had, we were here until 3:20 a.m.?
I think that was really what we...
Oh, so you're just, okay. Well, obviously, a lot of work went into this, and the company that you chose, and this last question was one of the things I wanted to mention, the fact that you're not creating, or he, the company didn't create something from scratch. We're following the guidelines as to outline by the National Park Service. So, it's not unique just to Annapolis. This is, these are standards that have been outlined by the federal government for all communities like ours. So, am I correct in that? Okay. What struck me particularly, everything, but the land mass has increased between 17, 1878 and 1903. Did we, obviously, do a landfill? And my question is, how does that impact sea level rise now? As we're struggling with how to adapt and, you know, deal with sea level rise on City Dock, does the land mass increase during this period have anything to do with our propensity? And we know sea level rise is real, or at least I think is real. But are we looking at how it got this way, as far as this City Dock land mass is concerned? Because the whole right side of City Dock has been filled in. And even if I'm looking at this correctly, a large part of the Naval Academy, and we know the field, because we remember that when we were kids, I was anyway, when that whole field was created. But even the seawall area, according to this, came in after 1878.
So, the short answer is yes. I mean, absolutely, absolutely, because, I mean, and that's some of the things that the analysis that has done, that has been done through our Cultural Resource Hazard Mitigation Plan, is what, looked at the evolution of the tides, and, and where the shoreline was. And I think this document also demonstrates the differences of how the shoreline has changed over the years as well. So, that definitely has an impact. And certainly, the built environment has an impact of all that, because as we know, part of the issue is the storm water management of the, you know, now, you know, going to an area which was probably once marshland. And that was the, the natural filter. It was the marshlands that are now gone. So, it all plays an impact and a part to all of the climate changes and the environmental analysis dealing with flood and, and sea level rise. I mean, that's the, that's the simplest way as I can explain it. I don't have the scientific, science behind it, but I know there are Cultural Landscape Resource, Cultural Resource Hazard Mitigation Plan, there was a lot of that analysis done showing that.
And also, I was going to add that the land that was filled in, it, today, is our lowest elevation around City Dock, so it's the most prone to flooding because it is so low. So, it's not really so much that the land was filled in, it was that it was then built upon, and now those structures are vulnerable.
So, as we look at that, and again, one of the adaptations in why the evolution of the plan, you know, it's a good segue to talk about, any changes in the context of this plan would be dealing with that. So, there would be changes to that land. You know, there's talk about raising up the, the streets or the buildings to get them above, you know, to make them less flood. That's one of the adaptation ideas, is to raise the whole harbor up, if you will, or build a seawall, or, or whatever the case may be. Those are long-term ideas that are being, no pun intended, floated around to solve some of the flooding issues in, in the downtown area, so...
Thank you.
All women, Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms., Dr. Nash, when you were before the council, when we were discussing O2318, you stated that the Cultural Landscape Report, that it would be ready in September, the resource report, that it would be ready in September, and it is ready in September. When you said that, there was the eye roll collectively from the audience, that sometimes we have these reports, and they are not in when we say they are going to be in. So, thank you for honoring the deadline that you gave. I want to make sure that I'm not confusing it with something else, but I'm referencing the right thing. That was the MX zoning legislation that we were discussing with O2318. And it referenced in there the city's Cultural Landscape Report for City Dock. Is this, that document it's referencing? And then it mentions it in there, in the section that's talking about visual impact assessment, that it's one of those different control factors that's in the visual impact assessment. I thought a large takeaway was the treatment and how you treat your historic structures. With regard to visual impact, how do you envision that being a part of the process?
Right. Well, treatment is important, but throughout this document, there is a lot of language about the views that existed over the different years. They analyze them through the Sanborn Maps in a lot of detail, and speak to the importance of protecting the views that are there now, keeping an open space and an open feel now. So, you know, I think it would depend on the specifics of a proposal, where it was exactly, but we would have to look through the document and compare the evolution of that particular part of City Dock over time, in terms of where the structures were, where they moved, what, what that would've looked like.
With the, um, the treatment style being rehabilitation, and you use the word evolution, so is it envisioning that even with the views, that it would be room for it to evolve and be different? Or was the views more of a preservation and keeping what we have now?
The language in the report speaks...
The language in the report speaks to protecting the views we have, and making sure infill development, which could be appropriate, maintains the approximate location, size, scale, bulk of what we have now.
So there's some room there, but it sounds like it's almost in-between preserving and rehabilitation? Is that a fair characterization?
There's a box.
Well...
There's places where you can, you can move out, but it's, it's got to stay within that framework. That's the best way I would explain it.
That is consistent with rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is the appropriate treatment for, when you are considering additions. So it's not that you can't have additions, like with preservation. You can, but it has to meet, you know, the context of that historic landscape.
So rehabilitation leaves room for things to grow in height and bulk? Okay.
Within the existing and historical context.
That's kind of like when people use the word "notwithstanding." I kind of take it as, "Forget everything I just said." Now I'm saying this. So I just want to make sure I understand. It does leave room for things to grow. If we're using this as a metric to, to judge if it's in the, the view, if the view is appropriate, then this report would leave room for things to grow in height and bulk.
You also have to recog, it's a very complex report, so that also depends on the area, because there are four very distinct areas of City Dock that were studied. So you have to look within those areas, and then come, come up with a definition for height and bulk within the box Pete just described.
Right. Because it depends on what it's next to, what contributing structure that's near, what, how much historical integrity is in that particular location, and factors like that.
Who does that assessment? Who compares the plans to the report and makes a determination?
Well, first, it would be done by the applicant, but it would be reviewed by staff. So, I mean, and then ultimately, the Historic Preservation Commission, necessarily the Plan Commission, whatever the case may be. But they would do the, they would show how they've met that, the criteria, and then it would be reviewed by other entities.
Sounds like a great deal of work. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Just a quick follow-up question. All right. So just to reiterate, this was required in the City Dock Master Plan to be done before zoning change. Is that right? Before there were any zoning changes?
The exact language is, oh, I know we're pretty happy. Is, "Prior to changes in the Dock Street Opportunity Sites, the city must prepare a professional cultural landscape report that recognizes the national historic landmark designation and applies the Secretary of the Interior standards for treatment of historic properties in assessing the significant historic assets in the vicinity, conducting a view shed analysis, and determining what, if any, adverse effect would occur on the integrity of the district if the proposed move of existing building line from Dock Street towards market slip is implemented." Those three things.
So it said before changes were made in, okay. Okay. I mean, I understand how it could have an impact on the character, type of development that comes in there, but I'm not quite so sure how it's going to have an impact on any proposed zoning changes.
It's a chicken and egg thing. I mean, in order to implement any change, or modifications to change, which was suggested in the City Dock Master Plan, it said you needed to do zoning changes. So, but before you did any zoning changes with, you needed to do this study first, or this report first. So that's, does that explain, I mean, implementation...
Well, just trying to figure out how the report is going to influence those changes, proposed changes to the zoning.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, I mean, it's, it's something, like I said, I mean, it would be, it would influence the proposed projects, so that needed to be done before you modify the change of use or anything you did in there. So I think it would have to be in context and character. I, I think it should be consistent with whatever zoning changes you're recommending, that be consistent with what's outlined in the treatments. So you wouldn't want to change something that wasn't consistent with what the cultural report was stating, in terms of, there are treatments that are talked about for each of these four different areas. They talk about things that you should, you know, incorporate in terms of analyzing or evaluating. So I guess it would have to be consistent with that. But I see your point. I don't know how it would implement, how it would modify or suggest the change in zoning, but it's more towards a project-specific. Yeah. It's a good point.
Alderman Tureny?
Okay. Finally here. This isn't a site, it's very, what's very informative, at least to me, is to actually attend an HPC review meeting, where the, the staff report is the one, the staff has a report, and in their report, they cite all of the documents they've used, and then the commission evaluates that and makes their own decision. But that staff report is sort of what you're, I think, what you're asking. But to facilitate my colleague, Alderman Shenegas Henson's question, I would encourage to look at page seven, or make a note of reading page seven. I got a hard copy in, in advance. So page seven has a very itemized list of the definition of rehabilitation, which is very good. I mean, you know, one, one part of, you know, new additions and adjacent or related new construction will be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property would not be, you know, affected, that kind of stuff. And then, and then as far as your other question on view shed, there's a page 117 that talks about the treatment, overall treatment approaches, and, and it's, you know, maintain and protect historic views and vistas between elevated areas and the water, as well as into and out of City Dock. So, you know, it's all in there, and it is sort of a different language than what we're used to in the code, you know? But again, I think I would highly recommend that it be adopted as, as a legislation of some sort.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda has been completed.
Anything else for good order?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Except for Alderman Arnett.
Hi. Alrighty. I'm going to test you all. You want my click notes, don't you, Fred?